Good afternoon. Welcome to the April 21st Phoenix City Council meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Ansari.
Here.
Councilman DeCiccio. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien. Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guardado.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here. Welcome to everyone, but especially to our two new councilwomen, Councilwoman Ansari and Councilwoman O'Brien. We are excited to have you with us. We have an interpreter with us today. Mario, would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As you previously mentioned, my name is Mario Arajas and I'll be serving as today's Spanish interpreter. I'll now take this time to introduce myself to our Spanish-speaking audience. Muy buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Mario Arajas. Yo seré quien les estará facilitando con la interpretación del español el día de hoy. Muchísimas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mario. Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinances and resolution numbers on this agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G6834 through 6840, S47465 through 47505, and resolutions 21916 through 21918.
Councilmember Garcia, have you had a chance to review the meeting minutes of December 18, 2019?
Yes, I have, and I motion to approve the minutes of the formal meeting on December 18, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor, please signal by aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes unanimously. Councilman Waring, have you had a chance to review the formal meetings minutes of January 8, 2020?
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor, please signal aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Passes unanimously. I will next turn to our city attorney, who will introduce public participation and public comment in formal meetings of the Phoenix City Council.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the public may speak for up to two minutes to comment on agenda items to be discussed. Comments must be related to the agenda item and the action being considered by the council. General comments that go beyond the scope of the agenda item must be made during the citizen comment session at the end of the agenda. Speakers must present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. Profane language and personal attacks on members of the public, council members, or staff are not allowed. A person who violates these rules will lose their opportunity to continue to speak.
Thank you. Civil discourse is so important to our city. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on boards and commissions?
Yes, motion to approve mayor and city council boards and commissions nominations as corrected.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please signal aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Passes unanimously. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on liquor licenses?
Yes, motion to approve items four through 11.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signal aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Passes unanimously. City clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business, and planning and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve items 12 through 83, except the following: Items 13, 14, 16, 31, 38, 49, 50, 58, and 83, and excluding these items for public comment, 49.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or corrections? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio. Garcia.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. I apologize.
Yes, did you hear? Yes, did you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
We next move to items 13 and 14, which are both payment ordinance items related to the police department. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on items 13 and 14?
Motion to approve items 13 and 14.
Second.
Uh, councilmember comments?
Mayor.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quick comments. Um, I just want to make a comment that we just can't keep doing business as usual with this council, continuing to approve the requests from this police department without, uh, applying the accountability measures, um, that we've been talking about. We just finished three weeks of ci- city budget hearings, where community asked over and over for changes to this police budget. While this payment comes directly from this year's budget, there still has, there hasn't been this larger conversation, um, about police spending. And I want to urge my colleagues, um, and especially in the next couple of months, when we will not be having Public Safety and Justice subcommittees, that we have this broader discussion of both accountability and police spending. So with that, I'll be voting no on 13 and 14. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional councilmember comments? Roll call on items 13 and 14.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio. Garcia.
No.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego. Passes 7-1.
We next move to an exciting item, the selection of the vice mayor. Acting vice mayor, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. Um, I have a motion and I move to select councilmember Carlos Garcia to serve as vice mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember comments? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio. Garcia.
Yes.
O'Brien. I apologize. O'Brien?
No.
Thank you. Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Oh.
I apologize. Waring?
Can you hear me? No.
I can hear you now. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 6-2.
Congratulations, councilmember Garcia. It's exciting to have District 8 in the vice mayor's seat. Councilwoman Guardado will serve as vice mayor for the remainder of this meeting, and when we adjourn, we will welcome councilmember Garcia as vice mayor of the city of Phoenix. Wish you best of luck in your term as vice mayor. Uh, we next move to item 31, which is U-Mom COVID-19 Rapid Rehousing Case Management Services. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 31.
Second.
Thank you so much. We have a motion and a second. This item is a very exciting, good news item, which will allow rapid rehousing services, um, in partnership with U-Mom. I had an opportunity to visit a housing complex where they had housed a family with five children, all of whom were doing well in school, and we're looking forward to helping, uh, up to 100 families with today's vote, which includes counseling and case management services. Appreciate U-Mom's partnership during this untem- time of unprecedented need, and want to recognize that the federal government is our partner on this important vote. Additional councilmember comments? Councilwoman Pastor, followed by councilmember Garcia.
This is exciting, um, and that we're able to, uh, partner with the federal government and make this happen. Uh, so you know, as we know, uh, that we, this is much needed in our community, and we need to continue, uh, to, uh, programs like this and partner with programs, uh, with U-Mom and others, uh, rapid rehousing. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm too, I'm really excited about this. We've been talking, especially during the pandemic, um, that there's a landslide of evictions coming, um, and we see this issue continue to come. I'm really glad that the families of Phoenix can continue to count, um, on U-Mom for the support. Rapid rehousing is a proven housing-first approach to get people into permanent housing quickly. Um, and I believe it's, it's the one solution to get people back into homes. And I just want to thank U-Mom for their continuous work every day to help those, uh, most needed in, in the city of Phoenix. So thank you all, and definitely be voting yes.
Roll call. Oh, councilwoman, uh, councilwoman, Vice Mayor Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also want to thank U-Mom for all of their work, um, that they're doing, um, throughout our, throughout our city. It's very exciting to have that partnership with them and seeing all the great work that they continue to do, um, throughout, throughout the city. So thank you so much for all the work that you're doing, and it, and exciting to see what future, what the future is going to look like, and very excited for the families that we're going to be helping. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego. Passes 9-0.
We next move to item 38, which will allow the city of Phoenix to become American Forest's first municipal tree equity partner. Councilwoman Ansari, do we have a motion?
Yes, um, I move to approve item 38. I'm very excited about this partnership. Um, tree equity, you know, trees are not just a nice-to-have, they're actually vital, um, in addressing the threat of climate change and improving air quality, which is, as we all know, a huge issue throughout the entire city of Phoenix, but especially District 7, so very excited about this one.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a, and a second from Vice Mayor Guardado. Thank you. I too am very excited about this one. It's an important partnership, and it, we are, uh, breaking new ground in the area. We have an ambitious goal in our city of enhancing our urban forest, and we know that trees are not just beautiful, but they create healthier communities. We are going to be well aware that we are a desert community and looking towards trees that are appropriate and low water use for the city of Phoenix. Uh, we'll be able to leverage a variety of partnerships, including philanthropy, to make sure our most vulnerable communities have the chance to get this important asset. And this will also help us with our clear goals and path forward. Uh, it comes as a moment when Phoenix is debating a major investment that I support in annual tree plantings. The proposed budget includes funding for 1,800 additional trees planted per year in cool corridors in our most heat-vulnerable neighborhoods. These corridors are proposed to be distributed in each council district. Looking forward to supporting this item, councilmember Garcia, followed by Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I too look forward to supporting this item as we continue to move forward initiatives that, uh, address the growing danger of urban heat in our city. Uh, District 8 especially, uh, is affected by urban heat. Um, I also appreciate that this MOU includes a focus on equity. We know heat does not affect everyone equally. Um, some South Phoenix neighborhoods are 10 degrees hotter than those in Central Phoenix or in other places. I hope this new partnership can help address these gaps, and really excited, and, um, congratulations to Councilwoman Ansari on her first motion.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as well, um, I, there is a lot of areas in, in District 5 where, where we suffer from the urban heat, and very excited to seeing this, um, moving forward. It's going to be a great thing to making certain parts of the city a lot more walkable, especially in the summer. In the summer months, it's, I know that we in District 5 have gotten some of the cool pavement program, and we'll see how that works, um, this summer coming up, so excited to see how that works out. And yes, excited for this, and, and excited to make our city a lot more walkable, and absolutely, congratulations, um, Councilwoman Ansari on your first motion.
Councilwoman Pastor.
So I am actually very excited about this because, uh, when I sat on the Encanto Village, uh, that's where the beginning of the heat island effect, uh, began in conversation. And, uh, trees were, were, uh, a hot topic. So I'm glad that we are continuing to reach our goal that we have set, but also putting it, uh, putting trees where they're much needed and, uh, having a lower water usage, uh, with the trees. The west side, Maryvale, and, uh, across, uh, well, all our city, but it is particularly the west side. And Maryvale had, at one point, shade trees, and at this moment, uh, are no longer there. And so I'm glad there's going to be an equity piece happening throughout our whole city. So, uh, congratulations, Councilwoman Ansari, for your first motion, and hopefully it's a 9-0. Uh, thank you. Bye-bye.
Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Come on, Waring.
No.
Oh, Wary!
Guardado.
Wow! Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-1.
We next move to item 49, the Downtown Shared Electric Scooter Pilot Program Fee Increases to Ensure Full Cost Recovery. Will the city clerk please read the title?
Item 49 is for ordinance G6835, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to approve fee increases associated with the Downtown Shared Electric Scooter Pilot Program to ensure full cost recovery.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 49.
Good.
We have a motion and a second. We do have two members of the public to address the council, so I'll begin with them. We will begin with Julia, followed by Jessica.
Can everybody hear me?
We can.
Great, thank you. Um, good afternoon, honorable mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments supporting item number 49. Uh, my name is Julia Wunsch, and I'm representing Spin, one of the operators participating in the city's East Scooter Pilot Program. I'd like to start by thanking the Street Transportation Department, um, for their partnership with us. Spin supports staff's recommendation, and we are committed to maintaining affordable pricing and helping the city recover costs to administer the program. We're devoted to doing our part to expand mobility options while maximizing safety and responsiveness to community needs as well. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to serve residents and the visitors of Phoenix, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you for your testimony, and Brandon Chung of Razor had signed in in support, but I do not see him online to testify. Jessica Bueno, the floor is yours.
Hello, thank you, Mayor Gallego and city council members. My name is Jessica Bueno, and I am the president of the Urban Phoenix Project. We, as an organization, strive for a central Phoenix in which walking, biking, and public transit are just as comfortable and convenient as driving. Achieving this requires a commitment to the best practices in urban design, infrastructure investment, and public transit from City Hall. We are incredibly thankful and supportive of the Electric Scooter Pilot Program approved in 2019 and the extension approved last year. This pilot program has allowed multimodal options to be available to the public and is a step in the right direction in addressing transit options. However, today's item of increasing vendor fees seems unwarranted due to the pilot program boundaries remaining the same, giving the vendors no real initiative to stay in Phoenix. Our recommendation would be to expand the electric scooter boundaries to allow access for more users and provide a last-mile solution for riders to the light rail. The city already has the multimodal infrastructure needed to extend the boundaries by the way of the vacant grid bike stations. If you are going to charge the vendors more, it would be fair for them to also receive more. We hope our feedback and recommendations are taken into consideration because this discussion of multimodal options in the city of Phoenix is extremely important in moving people around our city without vehicles. The city's intentional lapse of our bike, of our bike-share program speaks to the disregard of needed investments in multimodal options. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica, and I would ask our staff to, uh, include Jessica and her organization in our continued process to evaluate the program, which is still very much at the pilot phase, and, and we hope will grow and succeed. Councilmember comments? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor. I apologize. Pastor.
Yes.
Thank you. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-1.
We next move to item 50, an amendment to City Code regarding speed limits. Will the city clerk please read the title?
Item 50 is for ordinance G6839, an ordinance amending Chapter 36, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 12, Section 36-158, Schedule 1 of the Phoenix City Code relating to local speed limits at 19 locations.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 50.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ansari. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Oh.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego. Passes 8-1.
Item 58 is related to the Northwest Extension Phase 2 Light Rail Program. Councilwoman O'Brien, do you have a motion?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any councilmember comments? Roll call.
Ansari. I apologize. Ansari?
I said yes.
Thank you very much. DeCiccio.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Oh.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 7-2.
We next move to item 83, which is a planning and zoning matter at the northwest corner of 55th, 54th Street and Shea Boulevard. We will begin with a staff report. I will recognize our Planning and Development Director, Ellen Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Item 83 is a proposed planned unit development rezoning request located at the, oh, here we go, on the, along Shea Boulevard, uh, just to the, uh, east of, uh, 54th Street. The aerial here shows a proposed site outlined in red. It is a request for a PUD from an existing site that zoned PAD 2, as well as with a special permit and, uh, commercial office zoning on the site today. Uh, it is a proposed use by Honor Health for an outpatient medical, uh, center with, uh, some hospital-type uses as well as, uh, regular office uses. It's, uh, 3.19 acres. Here's a close-up of the subject site, where you see office immediately to the west of it, and directly to the east is a mountainside fitness, uh, facility. Here's the proposed, uh, site plan that does, uh, show substantial landscaping, uh, through, for the project, a detached sidewalk along Shea Boulevard, as well as a double row of trees. The existing setback from the residence to the north, there's a 30-foot landscape setback and 129-foot building setback to the closest, uh, part of the building for the proposed, uh, use. These are the elevations, uh, for the proposed project. You can see the building setback diagram here that is shown from the property line in the rear. You see that 30-foot landscape setback on that north property line adjacent to the residence. You see the drive aisle, the parking, uh, as well as the, the parking lot lighting. And then here is a close-up of some of the architectural details as it relates to the proposed building. The Paradise Valley Lodge Planning Committee did, uh, vote to approve this by a vote of 10, uh, four to two. The Planning Commission voted to approve it by a vote of six to three, with some additional stipulations. Staff does recommend approval per the memo from the Planning Development Department Director, uh, today. That addresses some additional neighborhood concerns regarding the installation of a traffic signal that the applicant, uh, will be required to pay for, a level of emergency services provided on-site, and parking lot and building lighting. Staff does recommend approval per the Planning Development Department memo dated today's date and adoption of the related ordinance, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Stevenson. Does anyone have any questions? Uh, we will begin with the public hearing. For the public hearing, we will have a 10-minute presentation from the applicant and the, uh, opposition. The 10 minutes they are allowed to use however they see fit, and visual aids are welcome. Uh, in this case, the, um, opposition group will divide into a four-minute and six-minute presentation. We will then, uh, take public hearing, uh, public comment from members of the public who are registered to speak for up to two minutes. There is no donation of time allowed. And, uh, we do welcome if, if you, uh, someone has already made the point that you wish to make, that, uh, you are welcome to echo it but not repeat it. Uh, but you may use your two minutes as you see fit on this particular agenda item, as long as the topic is this particular agenda item. And then we will close the public hearing and turn to the city council. We will begin with a presentation from the applicant represented by Wendy Riddell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, it's my pleasure to be here today on behalf of Honor Health. Next slide, please. Honor Health, uh, has, is a nonprofit that has been transforming healthcare throughout our community, treating more than 1.6 patients a year. That has, for over 90 years, been providing benefits, community benefits, um, from food boxes to vaccinations to things like their affiliation with the NOAA clinic. Next. And one of the questions we've heard a lot is why here and why this site? Well, in fact, there are 160,000 people that live within a 10-minute drive of this site. There are more than 45,000 emergency department visits annually. 16,000 of these visits were for lower acuity care, and there's only one emergency room within a 10-minute drive of the site. The fact is, our emergency departments now more than ever are near full capacity, and wait times are more than doubled than what will be achieved here. And Honor Health here, we see there's also a significant portion of the community that uses both access or is uninsured. And in fact, if 16,000 of these ER visits were avoided, that equates to approximately $32 million saved within this community. Next. This particular site here too, Zon- This particular site here too, zoned PAD2 with a special permit that allows a health club. This site has in fact been operated as a commercial facility for nearly 40 years, since 1982. Next. Fact is, under the existing zoning, the only thing that can go here today by right is another commercial use, a health club. It is the very thing that this community has been very clear they do not want to see developed here. Next. In fact, back in 2019, when Mountainside Fitness, they came through with a PHO that was unanimously recommended approval by the Village, PHO, and council. You can see that fitness facility, and you see the eventual plan for this site as well. Next. So if you look at our particular site plan, you'll note that Honor Health made a very intentional decision at the beginning of this process to pursue a PUD. We did it knowing the history with Mountainside, and so that our commitments to the community would be very, very clear, and they would be regulatory. You see a minimum of 100-foot setback to the north. You see 30 feet of landscaping, and you see that the building is single-story. Next. In the PUD, you'll note that we have doubled the setback requirement from otherwise the zoning district and doubled the landscape requirement. Only other uses permitted are those in CO. Next. And here, when you look at the building now put into context, you can see the existing mountainside, you can see the existing office building immediately to our west, and you can see what we're proposing is very consistent for this use for what you see east and west on a major arterial like Shea Boulevard. Next. So throughout this very long outreach process, there have been some consistent themes of things we have heard, and I want to walk through briefly what we have done to address each of those concerns. Next. One of the big concerns we heard was about building height. So here, we came in with a maximum height measured of 28 feet. And when I say 28 feet, I'm actually measuring height the way neighbors measure height. That 28 feet is to the tallest point on the building. We also, there was a concern expressed that there'd be building the building pad up and the building on top of that. So we agreed to a maximum elevation, and when you measure mountainside this way, it is actually at 40 feet in height. Next slide. We also know lighting was a very critical component. Everything we're proposing is dark sky compliant. Everything is shielded to prevent direct visibility of the light. The parking lot poles are a maximum of 15 feet in height within 150 feet of the residential district. Next. I would point out, that also is a very significant reduction compared to what was developed at La Camarilla back in 1982. There, the building poles were approximately 20 feet in height. They were as close as 43 feet to the neighbors, and I'm sure I don't have to tell this council that lighting technology has come a very far way since 1982 in how we handle lighting. Next slide. Signage. Also, we have made sure that there's no illuminated signage located on the north side of the building adjacent to the residential neighborhood. Blue stars represent our signage locations. Next. We also made sure that where you do have signage that faces to the south, that the back of those letters have no light spillage. We actually had fabricated a letter from the sign to be able to demonstrate there'll be no light spillage from the back of the sign. Next. Now, one of the big concerns we've heard a lot about is the hours of operation. And here, the 24 hours is a requirement of the state license. For this property to be licensed to be an emergency department, it has to be open 24 hours. But the reality is, between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., we will see likely on average between one to two patients per night. Next slide. And we know this because we've compared that, looked at actual hard data from our facilities, sister facilities in Texas and Indiana, and the numbers you see going back to 2018, 2019, and 2020 represent the actual number of patients, actual average number of patients per night between the hours of 11:00 and 7:00. And you will see, it is very, very low. Next. We also heard back at the Planning Commission, well, how do we know the neighbors there are happy? How do we know it's not a problem? We actually had Tom Billstein go out and interview, interview the councilman, the mayor, and two of the neighbors that live immediately adjacent to their facility. We've shared some of those videos. All of them had very positive things to report. Next. We also here have looked at local examples. Now, admittedly, this is not Honor Health, it's Dignity Health, but this is a site that exists down in Awatuki. It is 42 feet from the edge of the ambulance on into the property line, and when we checked Neighborhood Services, there had not been a single complaint. Next. I also want to point out, as it relates to hours of operation, that if the CO immediately to our west had an urgent care, it could in fact, by right, be 24 hours, 24/7. And in fact, if Mountainside chose to be 24/7, they also could be 24/7 by right. So again, very consistent with both what's to our east and what's to our west. Next. We also know that when you go out there, this is on Shea Boulevard. Shea Boulevard, when it's at its quietest, is a refrigerator. At its noisiest, is someone making margaritas. There are approximately 300 motorcycles, 1,600 semi trucks that travel this section of Shea daily. Next. Going back, yes. One of the other concerns we've heard about lights and sirens. We have committed that we will not contract, there will not be Code 3 ambulance lights and sirens coming to this facility. They will be directed elsewhere. Next. It was pretty fascinating to us too, because we drilled down a little bit further. We actually talked with the Scottsdale Fire Department. We asked how many times lights and sirens go to their Level 1 trauma, to Scottsdale Shea, to Scottsdale Thompson Peak. The reality was, even at those facilities, all of those facilities, they don't even achieve really 1% is the time the number of lights and sirens come to those facilities. Very, very low. Next slide. And that's, by the way, when you look at facilities that are of this size, so really, when you look at how low that comparison is to us, you understand it is not a concern. Next slide. So we committed at the Village, we stand by it, that is a condition of the PUD. The operator of this facility shall not contract with EMS for lights and sirens. Next slide. We also know traffic was a big concern, which is why we agreed at the Village to, at Honor's cost, install a signal to make sure at 54th and Shea, that today, where people are cutting through and going back into the neighborhood to get to a signal, with a signal there, it will improve the traffic in that neighborhood today. Next. One of the other concern is, how do we know we will keep our word? Well, the first, again, is because the very intentional decision to pursue a PUD, a document that cannot be modified through a PHO, and of course, because we're Honor Health, who has a demonstrated commitment to this community. Next. And finally, I would suggest to you that we are a better neighbor than any other potential user. Double the building setback, double landscaping, limit on lighting, signage, building height, the installation of a signal, Village approval, Planning Commission have committed good neighbor. We respectfully request your approval. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you. The opposition will have two presentations. Tim Lasota will begin with a four-minute presentation. Tim, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Gallego and members of the council. I am Tim Lasota. I represent 29 individuals who oppose this application, and thank you for bringing the PowerPoint up. So the real issue, and there are a number of them, but the real issue is the desire to operate an emergency room in this area right adjacent to a neighborhood. Obviously, it's going to be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Next slide, please. So it, you know, you heard Ms. Riddell talk about, you know, that, well, the neighbors didn't want another health club or a mountainside. Well, they didn't want this either. This is an example, these came from a petition on the, of people who opposed this project. You'll notice there aren't any supporters on this map because this map just takes the people who are the closest to the project. We went and we drew the supporters based on the people who spoke at the last meeting in favor of it. Could I have the next slide, please? So you have to pan out a long way to see these greens, these people who actually showed up and supported it at the hearing. There were also a couple of emails in the packet for council of supporters. You see those, those are kind of in black, but the people close to this project do not want it. They're unconvinced by the presentations that this isn't really going to be a big deal, and it's wildly unpopular in the area. There's just no getting around it. Next slide, please. You know, this is, and this is why it's unpopular, you know, that this is just, it's right in the sea of houses, and the neighbors recognize that, and that's why they oppose it. Next slide, please. So, you know, you heard Ms. Riddell, it's kind of been a shifting story about whether sirens will be used or not. It sounds to me as if, even though she just told you in her presentation that lights and sirens will not be needed, they may not come to the facility with lights and sirens on, but assuming somebody comes to this facility expecting them to be treated for a significant injury that this facility cannot handle, lights and sirens will take the people away to another facility. So that's, we disagree on how often it'll happen, but that is a direct quote from her presentation. Next slide, please. Not consistent with the general plan, obviously, and it is another point. Look, I mean, if we're gonna, I don't know what you'd say no to in the future if you say yes to this. It sounds like it's just about anything if it's an arterial, no matter what the use is. Next slide, please. Alternatives. You know, Ms. Riddell talked about, well, it's, we got to have 24/7. We offered a lot of alternatives. Office, medical, no patients, 10 to 7, residential, the current zoning. The applicant, you know, for all their talk about all the outreach they did, they would not move off the 24/7 emergency room. Next slide, please. And one of the things Ms. Riddell said in one of the previous meetings is you can't have residential on an arterial street. That's just not true. This is one I picked because I drive by it every day. Third Street and Glendale Avenue, a busy, busy arterial. This is a new development, nice houses. It's certainly possible. It's not a reason for this rezoning. Next slide, please. So, you know, you heard, one of the big issues is this is actually a rezoning. I mean, we could go around, Ms. Riddell found one that's 42 feet away, but she didn't mention whether it was rezoned after there were houses there to accommodate an emergency room. If you could just go through the next slides quickly, that'd be good. These are some examples we found. In this case, there are houses, actually, last slide, there are houses there, but this is on the corner of Estrella Parkway and Van Buren. I didn't have a chance to check the zoning, but my guess is they did not need a rezone to put this facility here. So I think the bottom line is neighbors should expect to be protected from this type of a use, care to them. The last thing I'll say is that if this goes here, it's hard to know what doesn't go on an arterial street, and that certainly that should be reflected in the general plan, that this is just appropriate on an arterial street, no matter where it is. Thank you, Mayor and members of the council.
Thank you. We will now turn to Malik Parik.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Let's start now. Hello, my name is Malik Parik. I'm a professor of physics at ASU, and I live very near the proposed site at 5501 East Shea. And my case boils down to this. Even if you think this will be a fantastic hospital for the community, it's in the wrong location. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. To say it again, the question of whether the hospital is a good idea is a distinct and separate question from whether the hospital should be built here at this site. I felt that at the Planning Committee meeting, some of the commissioners got these two issues mixed up and let their support of the hospital translate into support of the hospital here. Next slide, please. Okay, so here we have a photograph of the neighborhood. You can clearly see the tennis club. Notice that in virtually all directions, there are houses, houses, houses. This is a very definition of a residential neighborhood. Next slide, please. Now, there are many things that are good for society, landfills, power plants, which, though they may be necessary, we don't ideally want to put in residential neighborhoods. Next slide, please. Residents of our neighborhood have signed a petition objecting to the site, as you can see here. Nearly 300 adults have signed the petition, which, the name of the petition is called "Save the Neighborhood." That should tell you what they think of the proposal. Now, to be sure, there are some people in support, and you'll be hearing from some of them later today, but here's a map that gives you an idea. Next slide, please. Again, the tennis court is a little blue in the middle of the map. All these red tags are neighbors who are opposed. That's over 90% of us, Democrats and Republicans, are in agreement. Meanwhile, the closest person to have spoken in favor of the proposal at the Planning Commission meeting is shown as this green tag in the upper left of the screen, far upper left, about a mile away. Next slide, please. So why are we opposed? Well, there are really two reasons, and it really has nothing to do with lighting and signage. One is that we don't think a 24/7 building business belongs in a residential neighborhood. And second, which is related, we're concerned that it'll hit our property values. Next slide, please. Next. Here's a slide taken from Honor Health's own earlier presentation. We're actually being told contradictory things. They're saying that the facility will hardly be used at night, while at the same time saying there's a great need for such a facility and pointing to 45,000 emergency care visits. Now, taking that number, if even one-sixth of this comes to us as nighttime traffic, and that's not even including urgent care visits, we would have disruption every 12 minutes around the clock. Imagine how that feels at night. Imagine there was a 24/7 business next to your house, and every 12 minutes, whether it's 3:00 a.m. or 4:00 a.m., there's a car racing in, or engines revving, or doors slamming, or what have you. And that doesn't even take into account the potential sirens of ambulances. Next slide, please. This in turn has a direct effect on property values. Some of the surrounding homes are worth over $1 million. Imagine you are looking to buy a home for yourself, and you have the good fortune of having $1 million to spend. Would you buy a property next to an emergency hospital? It's going to cause you to think twice. That reduction in demand is already taking place. Since the sign went up saying that the property could be rezoned for a hospital, some of the offers for homes have come in $200,000 lower than what they should be. That is just not fair to us. Next slide, please. It's not only anecdotal evidence. Here's an article about the industries that most decreased property values, quoting a study by a major real estate group. And look at the first thing they mentioned, hospitals. Next slide, please. We have attempted to negotiate with Honor Health by proposing a compromise. They could have their hospital here, but it should close at some hour, like, say, 11:00 p.m., but they refuse to budge and would not modify their business model, instead offering us crumbs about building height. Next slide, please. This is a classic David and Goliath story. Honor Health is not a small business that needs your support in order to survive. Next slide, please. To give you an idea, you can go to their own website and find nearby locations, and if you do that, you'll find a staggering 76 facilities within 10 miles of the zip code. Next slide, please. To put that number in context, it's more than the number of Starbucks cafes. Next slide, please. Of course, these facilities are not all urgent care centers, but the point is this, this is just their 77th expansion project for them, whereas for us, it's a one and only neighborhood. That fact alone should prioritize the desires of the residents or the applicant. Next slide, please. The worst part is, there are so many alternative sites where they could build. At this very moment, commercial property is in a full-on crisis with restaurants closing, retail chains closing because of online commerce, working from home making us realize we don't need all that office space. We need to find uses for this commercial property. Next slide, please. Indeed, there are even options nearby. This, again, is taken from an earlier Honor Health presentation. It's the corner of Tatum and Shea, just a quarter mile from the site. Honor Health is claiming that there are no available alternatives, but this information is outdated and even outright false. Since they prepared their presentation, a huge Staples store has closed in the northeast corner. In fact, we've even found another site for them. This morning, we called the agent for the site in the northwest corner of Tatum and Shea. Apparently, given the status of indoor dining and the pandemic, the owner no longer is holding out for restaurants and could potentially be willing to partner with Honor Health. Look, it's not the responsibility of us residents to find alternative locations for Honor Health, but the ease with which we were able to find other options just underlines that the hospital really doesn't need to be built here. Next slide, please. In summary, councilors, however you vote, the hospital is likely to be built. There are 76 precedents for that. So you're really faced with two options. Build it on this residential site, or tell them, look, we love your idea, but find a better location nearby. In both cases, the health needs of the community will be served. needs of the community will be served, but building it elsewhere would preserve our quality life and our property values, and from a planning point of view, it will also make use of the glut of commercial space. Win, win, win. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. That's, yeah, that's it. Thus, to say it again, the issue of whether this hospital is a good idea is distinct from the issue of where it should be built. It's an all-around superior option to build it elsewhere. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. I will now ask our staff to call members of the public who wish to testify on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Peter Nelson. Peter, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's my anniversary, and I'm taking time from the afternoon with my wife, so I can speak because it's so important to us. We live several hundred feet from this project. It's my neighborhood, where I eat, sleep, and work. I've lived here, where my wife and I have lived here, for over 21 years. We support this project due, due to the fact that it's a rather innocuous, innocuous use. That's a greatly needed amenity. In fact, my own doctor is just down the street will be moving into this facility, as I understand. You know, the opposition claims to speak for all the neighbors and discounts anyone who doesn't share their view, while they don't speak for us. They presented in the past, and presumably have today, I'm on, on a cell phone, so I can't see, but they presented in the past a petition with 300 signatures or more, which may look compelling at first glance. However, please keep in mind that there are more than 7,900 neighbors within one mile of this project, another 82,000 within three miles. Please don't let the vocal few speak for the need of the many. Also, opposition talks about lights and sirens leaving the facility, as they did today. Honor Health has stipulated to try to address this and not have lights and sirens. However, this is not Chicago Med. I don't know how to call it a hospital. There are no helicopters either. I'd wager there are more lights and sirens leaving from the neighborhoods than from this development. Opposition claimed again today that Honor Health will hurt property values in the neighborhood, however facts prove otherwise. According to Zillow, since the much-maligned mountainside opened, homes in this immediate vicinity have actually appreciated on average about 20%, including the house immediately adjacent to the north of this project, which was just sold during the zoning case this past summer, and continues to appreciate. Homes north of here are being rebuilt and bladed even, and turned into multiple millions of dollars. People move here because of these amenities. The site is flanked by non-residential uses to the east and to the west, even a resort. Honor Health is an effective transition from the major arterial, and the enhanced design and landscaping and increased setback really makes this a wonderful amenity to our community. I wish I had this before when my son had a major brain injury and had, wouldn't have had to go to urgent care, no hospital. He could have been treated right here. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Our next speaker is Victor Feliz. Victor, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Do you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you. Yes, my name is Victor Feliz. I live close by on, on Akoma, frequently, obviously, in the area. And as much as I do understand some of the opposition, I am very much in favor of, and in fact, probably the most compelling reason is when previously it was said that Honor Health is a large business and does not need us to survive. Well, I think it's the other way around, and it's somebody like me and people who are living in the neighborhood, maybe getting on in the years, that we actually do need that to survive. And I think having the facility within very easy access, not creating any problems, not creating disturbances, but being there very, very specifically for quick and efficient and relatively inexpensive treatment is an absolute plus. So I speak very much in favor of this project, and I hope others support it too. Thank you, Council.
Our next speaker is Gino Davi. Gino, are you on the line?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Gino, and I've been in this area, Tatum and Shea, for about 25 years, and we really need an emergency, 24-hour emergency room, building there, because it's kind of hard, especially in the evening, a night, to drive all the way to the hospital for any kind of emergency. So I would support this, this project.
Our next speaker is Paul Katsinas. Paul, are you on the line?
I am. Mayor, Council, as a family, we live nearby on 54th Place, and I support this project. I pass by this site a half, half a dozen times a day. Let me point out a couple of things that you're all completely aware of, I'm sure. Tatum and Shea and the PV Mall area have created real communities. Shea, at the same time, carries traffic through east and west, all the way from Scottsdale to SR51. Tatum takes traffic from North Phoenix, south, through Paradise Valley, onto Camelback Road, and further south. These are tremendously important transportation corridors, not only for our communities there, but for all who pass through. This Honor Health facility, Mayor, Council, could well be the reason lives might be saved in the future. I support this project, and I urge you to support it also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric O'Hara. Eric, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Mayor and members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Eric O'Hara. First off, I need to note that I serve on the North Mountain Village Planning Committee, and I'm not here representing that body. Also, I'm a Valley firefighter, and I'm not representing my department. I am representing myself as a Phoenix resident and a proud resident of District 3. I did, I do want to note, I have been a firefighter for more than 14 years, and I've had a standalone ER less than three miles away from my firehouse for over five years. This gives me a unique understanding of these types of facilities and the services they provide. It is safe to stay, standard ERs are overwhelmed and overcrowded, and that was pre-COVID. This has been an issue locally for a very long time. The first attempt to bridge the gap between doctors' offices and ERs were urgent cares. Urgent cares are perfect for what they are designed to do, very minor medical issues, stitches, basic bone breaks, flu-like symptoms, and et cetera, basically all life, non-life-threatening issues. Their level of care staffing prevents them from handling true life-threatening emergencies. There now exists a gap between urgent cares and ERs. That gap has been filled, and relieve the stress on standard ERs by opening these new standalone ERs in local communities. It is important to know ambulance traffic is prevented from transporting to these facilities with lights and sirens by the Arizona Department of Health Service. It is rare, and in extremes, extreme cases, we could transport from a standalone ER to a standard ER. This is very, very, very rare to occur. In five-plus years, I have only transported one time. It was a patient that was having an active heart attack and needed a cath lab and emergency surgery immediately. I want to make it clear, I have no interest or family interest in any of these facilities. Simply put, I care about my neighborhood and my community. That's why I'm a firefighter and serve on my neighborhood planning committee. I believe any neighborhood would be fortunate to have the level of increased emergency care these facilities offer. With that, and barring any questions, I relinquish the remainder of my time. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Ospina. Maria, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. This is Maria Ospina. I live here in Paradise Valley. I live on the corner of 52 and Shea, and I strongly, strongly support this measure. I have worked in the health industry. I have three children who work in health industry. I know how important health is, how difficult it is in this country to get good health service. We are living in this, in a Paradise Valley here, which is a community of elderly people, and we run into emergencies daily, nightly. We need a place where we can get to a facility that can take care of an emergency with the best possible care. This is not possible in the urgent care facilities, and of course, we don't want to overwhelm, and especially now in the COVID era, an ER is so many blocks away, 40 blocks away from us. So I strongly support the measure. I strongly support it because of our particular community. We do live on a corridor that goes from one end of the town to the other. We need this. I pass it every day, all day long. We need this. We need this facility. Please concur with us, and thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for this consideration.
Our next speaker is Jessica Ayello. Jessica, are you on the line? Our next speaker is Mark Aronauer. Mark, are you on the line? Our next speaker is Angela Banks. Angela, are you on the line? Our next speaker is Connie Berger. Connie, are you on the line? Our next speaker is Carol Berger. Carol, are you on the line? Our next speaker is Bruce Beverly. Bruce, are you on the line? Our next speaker is Tony Beverly. Tony, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Hello? Okay, my husband is Bruce Beverly. He's tied up at work, so he couldn't be on that call. My name is Tony Beverly. I live at 10202 North 54th Place, South of Shea, east of the proposed Honor Health site. A hospital is a health, is a healthcare institution providing patient treatment. So how can a hospital deliberately make people sick by upsetting more than 300 people by trying to move into a neighborhood where they are not wanted and not needed? Zoning for the proposed site is residential, and that means the zoning would have to be changed from what it's been now for more than 40 years. Please don't do this. Move to another site that's not residential. Would you want your house back by 24/7 ER? As mentioned before, there are many commercial sites available. Please move to one of them and let our neighborhood remain residential. Both my husband and I oppose this change requested by Honor Health. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Benjamin Bros. Benjamin, are you on the line? We're having difficulty hearing Benjamin, so the next speaker is Sherri Brown. Sherri, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you. Before I proceed, my husband is so signed up to speak. He and I have collaborated, and we've realized that we can do one session, but if I could take 30 seconds of his time, and he will not be speaking today. Is that okay if I can have 2 minutes and 30 seconds?
We do not allow donation of time.
Okay, I'll do the best. Tell me when I'm able to go.
Please proceed.
The floor is yours.
Okay. We live on, south of Shea on 52nd Street, and we've lived here for 24 years. Our concern is the specific location. With living in the area and having Shea as my main access, I know the traffic issues on Shea regarding this location. It's been naive when Ms. Riddell undermines the facts and mocks the traffic issues in the area. This is not just a typical busy street. This specific location, bottlenecks, there's no other location on Shea that does this. Prior to COVID, anytime past 3:30 in the afternoon, I know I cannot get to my home on Shea if I'm going westbound, excuse me, because the traffic is so backed up, starting at 54th Street. Life will shortly resume, and schools will reopen, and life will go back together again. It's shocking to me that you want to put an emergency room in this space. This location is close to Scottsdale North. It's easy to transport, but does it really make a perfect location if it's not easily accessible? It appears that they are more concerned about their transport patients being close to a hospital than they are their everyday patients. Mountainside Fitness took their best part of the land, and now you want to squeeze an emergency facility in a small part of this parcel. Why would a fitness facility have better accessibility than an emergency facility? I was told by Tom Bilston with Honor Health that a light will be going in at 54th Street, or considered because of the issues that you're aware. How does this benefit the patients at Honor Health facility? It only benefits the fitness center. This will only contribute more bottleneck issues. This is what happened when they installed the 50th Street light. This comment proves to me that there was no proper traffic study that has been done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Enrica Carotinudo. Enrica, are you on the line? Our next speaker is Brooke Shulet. Brooke, are you on the line? Our next speaker is William Christian. William, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, my name is Bill Christian. For the last, through February, eight years prior, I was HOA president at North Phoenix Promontory over by 54th and Shea. You know, as I listened to the people who spoke in favor of this proposal, they all liked the idea, and as Malik pointed out, they liked the idea of having a 24/7 operation nearby, but none of them specified that it had to be in that area to include the person who lived on Akoma, which is over a mile away. And I thank the first responder for all his service to our community, but once again, he was promoting a 24/7 operation nearby. Nobody says it has to be in that specific location, which has always been a residential zoning. So I think myself and the many other residents in the area are all opposed to any 24/7 operation in that particular location. The Honor Health is a good program, but it needs to not be in a neighborhood where it's open 24/7, so it should find a different location. Thank you very much. I hope you oppose this project.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel Cooper. Daniel, are you on the line?
This is Angelina Cooper. Yes, I'm on the line. Thank you, Mayor Gallego, and to our city council members for your time and listening to our concerns. I am speaking on behalf of both my husband and myself today. We not only live in the immediately adjacent community south of Shea, but we are both care providers for the Honor Health network. Ironically, my husband could not be here today as he's taking ER call and operating the OR at the Honor Health Shea campus right now, not 13 minutes from where this proposed ER location is supposedly needed. We both stand in opposition to this rezoning project that Honor Health is proposing to place a 24-hour emergency room in our neighborhood. Honor Health claims to be offering this project as a service to the neighborhood, but there are no neighbors in the immediate vicinity of this mammoth project that support this venture. One of the primary reasons my husband and I bought here is that we have less than 30 minutes access to all six of Honor Health campuses and ERs, two of which are within 15 minutes access, where we both work and take call. To claim there is a community need for a 24-hour ER in the resource-rich PV Scottsdale area is far-fetched. Clearly, this is a business venture trying to tap into a very wealthy, very well-insured resident population and not serving the underserved. Again, this project has no business in the heart of this residential district. As community healthcare providers for over 20 years, we have familiarity on how healthcare systems function, both small and large. Honor Health is considered a steward for quality healthcare in our community, but they are a small hospital system. Inevitably, small hospital systems are ill-equipped to be bought out by large hospital systems. Honor Health is pitching a supposed community-friendly project, but the inescapable truth is that the Honor Health system will be bought out by Dignity Banner or another national hospital system with much deeper pockets. The accommodations and guarantees that Honor Health is proposing will become awful. will become obsolete when they are acquired. The deeper pockets of the national hospital systems will eventually acquire adjacent properties, and what was once rezoned as a small ER will eventually become a full-fledged hospital, erasing what Honor Health claims is a well-intentioned community need. This would be an absolute detriment for our residential neighborhood. I implore you to vote no on this project, which has very real potential catastrophic impact on the community where we are raising our one-year-old daughter and my second unborn child. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Robin Couture. Robin, are you on the line? Our next speaker is Ken Diamond. It appears we do not have Ken, so our next speaker is is Renee Duckworth. Renee, are you on the line?
My favorite. The forty-eight for a dozen or three dozen. Wow, this is so expensive, right? Oh, my gosh.
Renee, are you on the line?
Let me see if I could find that.
Renee, do you have any thoughts about zoning?
I don't want to keep you from your work.
Our next speaker is Kevin Engelhardt. Kevin, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Hi, my name is Kevin Engelhardt. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a board-certified cardiologist, as well as a board-certified ICU doc, both in pediatrics. I work at Phoenix Children's Hospital, but I'm not here representing them. I'd like to talk about a few issues with this project. The first is, I think it's already been said very well and better than I can, but this feels like a great departure from the original agreement from the Lockhammer Arena Tennis Club, now to a mountainside fitness, and then ultimately to a 24/7 emergency department. My second concern relates to the traffic increases, both on that road and then the shunted traffic that'll increase on Choya Road. Choya Road is used by my children and many other children in the neighborhood in order to be picked up and dropped off by the buses. That afternoon traffic has already increased and continues to increase with the congestion at the corridor between Shea, Tatum, and then 54th Street. I'm aware of at least two deaths because of traffic, one at 51st and Choya, and another at 56th and Choya in the last ten years. I would say that these are probably related to increased traffic and increased congestion. The last thing I'd like to speak about, which is just my experience as a trainee in Texas, where freestanding ERs are quite common. I was trained at the University of Texas Southwestern, and during my critical care training, we obviously received a number of children who had come from these freestanding ERs. The staffing model for these is typically a mix of ER-boarded physicians, as well as physicians who are bored in family practice, as well as internal medicine, doing what we call moonlighting in our field. These moonlighting physicians end up providing lower level care, especially to children, with disastrous outcomes that I've seen personally. Examples would be inability to obtain airway access in an emergency, thereby leading to a cardiac arrest and long-term brain damage, as well as death, and inability to.
Our next speaker is Tammy Erdman. Tammy, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. My name's Tammy Erdman. I live about 1,000 feet from where the proposed emergency room is. Full disclosure, I'm fifty-seven years old. My husband is fifty-nine years old, and we're also caregivers to our eighty-eight-year-old father-in-law. So we're in the heavy healthcare age, and we are opposed to the emergency room. I'm a native Phoenician, and I actually was raised in a house on 24th Street near Thomas Road. So even way back then, in the age-old 1980s, we had a lot of traffic there, and believe me, I'm used to the noise of busy streets in urban Phoenix. We also had 24-hour businesses nearby, but none were adjacent to any houses there. Now also, until 2018, I lived in a house right on Bell Road with six lanes and a median. No houses there were adjacent to 24-hour businesses. My neighbors and I have road noise now. We know what it's like, but what we don't have is a 24-hour business right on the other side of a property line, and that's really what we're all here to plead with you about. Please don't let that happen to us. People in this town, we do, in this neighborhood, we do tend to be pretty business-friendly, and other than mountainside fitness, we have a great relationship with our business neighbors. Even if they can, they have the decency not to operate 24/7 if they're adjacent to us. Now, if Honor Health weren't adjacent to our residences, we could definitely talk. If it weren't open 24 hours, we could talk, but just because it's both those things, hundreds of nearby residents signed that petition. I want to make it clear, none of us want special treatment. We just want to be treated the same as everyone else in a three-mile radius from us who also don't have to put up with a 24/7 business right on the other side of their property line. And I did the research. There are no houses around here that are adjacent to 24/7 businesses. Thank you so much for listening. I appreciate the opportunity for input. Please vote no.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alyssa Forceheims. Alyssa, are you on the line? Our next speaker is Harold Gans. We do not have Harold. Our next speaker is Jason Gans. Our next speaker is Hillary Gans. Our next speaker is Charlton Harter. Our next speaker is Nicole Hatton. Nicole, are you on the line? Our next speaker is Robert King. Robert, are you on the line?
Yes, thank you. Again, my name is Robert King. I'm the current president of the Promontory HOA, which represents ninety homes immediately southeast of the proposed site. Ten of our homes actually front Shea. So our community is directly impacted by the proposed rezoning, and I respectfully request that this council reject this proposal. Couple of things that have not been raised so far in this discussion is that Honor Health already has a urgent care about a half-mile, less than a half-mile from the site that they're proposing. They offer services from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If 24-hour access is the unmet need that Honor Health is trying to achieve and that the staff report seems to suggest is needed, then why don't they just extend their hours of that urgent care, and no community disruption is needed whatsoever? And also, with respect to the current need, within just three miles of this site, we've got a Banner Urgent Care, a Concentra Urgent Care, a NexCare Urgent Care, and a Phoenix Children's Urgent Care. And then on top of that, the Scottsdale Shea Honor Health Hospital is just five miles down the road. So the idea that this is somehow a compelling need for the community is just not there. Finally, I just wanted to reiterate the substantial commercial vacancy that is also just a half-mile away at the corner of Shea and Tatum. There's a vacant Albertson's, there's a vacant Staples, there's a vacant Beth Baden-Beyond. And just up the street is the massive redevelopment of PV Mall. We do not need to add more commercial space, and particularly in the midst of a residential area. I don't believe that Honor Health has met the burden to prove that this proposal justifies the disruption to the residents, and I respectfully request you reject it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandy Kravitz. Sandy, are you on the line?
Oh, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
You can hear me? Okay. I live two blocks north of this proposed project, and the homeowners in this area on both sides of Shea had a realistic expectation due to the stringent patio zoning in place that our neighborhood would be protected from this type of development. Many residents surrounding this parcel were not apprised of Honor Health's plans until well after the Paradise Village Planning Commission and the city's planning committee met several months ago. Their silence is not tacit approval. Don't you find it the slightest bit peculiar that the property owner sold this parcel for a mere $10 and the valuable consideration, as published recently in the Paradise Valley Independent? What exactly is valuable consideration? It appears that there's some sort of quid pro quo going on, because I doubt this is a philanthropic transaction. And we don't want another traffic signal at 54th Street and Shea. That will, in my opinion, add more traffic to our neighborhood. There are already three other traffic signals between 56th Street and Tatum. Let's see, what else? Let's see. Oh, Honor Health has framed this facility in terms of providing a community service. However, several articles in newspapers, academic, and government periodicals, some of which were shared with you, have highlighted that the services and cost savings are not as promised. If the city council approves this rezoning, then you are telling residents across Phoenix that they cannot rely upon the compact that the city makes through zoning to preserve its neighborhoods. I urge you to consider the rights of the property tax-paying residents in the neighborhoods surrounding this parcel and vote no on the rezoning. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren Leonard. Lauren, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, sorry. Okay, I'm tired of everyone and Rydel mocking the hundreds opposed to this location. Not the project. We are not against the project. We are against this location. We're talking about three-tenths a mile. We all care about lives being saved. You're putting it in a very dangerous spot of Shea Boulevard. You're going to cause fatal accidents. No one here wants it in their backyard, regardless of whether you're pro or against. No one wants it in their back or front yard, where I have a five- and a six-year-old daughter. I already face almost being T-boned every day getting out of my neighborhood, even a light, which a City of Phoenix survey, y'all said that it increases fatalities. We're asking you, we are asking you, this is dangerous. All we're asking you is move it three-tenths of a mile. This is supposed to be a sacred neighborhood zone. You've been trying to tell us. Rydel says, hey, trust our word, but yet you're going back and saying, we don't, you can't trust us because you're trying to change a sacred neighborhood zone into a new zone. No one is against this project. We're against where it is. Everyone knows. Honor Health and the city claim that you're here to help the underprivileged, yet you're in the most richest zip code in Arizona. You're also the most insured. You're not here to help the underprivileged, and I'm going to have my CNN contact look into this, because this is unbelievable. Truly, truly. Part of the system of oppression. I'm not kidding you. You city servants are supposed to be representing us and protecting us, us who voted for you. Tom Haddon told us he owns you from the day one, and that this will pass no matter what we do. I'm tired of the government, despite the majority, saying, I know what's best for myself, and our neighborhood knows what's best for us. You're entreating and telling us that you know better, and you're making decisions for us, like vaccinations and where to put the ERs. We just want it three-tenths a mile down the street. Every other ER in Arizona is on a corner because it's not safe to put it on a stretch of land that's already got tons of accidents. Start, I voted for you twice, and I realize that you're not bipartisan. You're trying to defund the police and the people.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Leach. Eric, are you on the line?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Eric Legay, and my family and I live just north of the proposed rezoning. I use the word rezoning because I think it's a really, really appropriate thing to say. This hearing is not at all about whether or not this type of facility is needed or valuable. We all have our positions on that. This has nothing to do with whether it's needed or valuable. There's really just one question here, and it's a question that for some reason, despite all of the effort, time, and energy that you all and the others have put into this, that Honor Health has put into it, and that the community has put into it, nobody has yet, in my opinion, answered the question of why this property. I've yet to hear one iota of reason why this property is so important. That has clearly gotten me upset. This is clearly important to have these types of facilities, put them somewhere else. I can't actually find a way to to impose upon you how important it is to the community and its members that the zoning that's in place today be kept. There's a reason it was put there in the beginning. Those people who put the zoning there spent a lot of time and energy to do it. They had reasons for doing it, and you're now being asked to uphold that by a community of people who've put forth really, really valid reasons to have Honor Health move to position B. And I believe they have a position B. They're not counting on this happening. They've made plans for another location. Simply ask them to move there. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rona Legay. Rona, are you on the line?
There, I'm on the line. Hi, thank you. My name is Rona Legay. I live at 54th and East Marrow Drive, right behind the proposed new location. And that was my husband who just spoke. And like the others, we are against the project because the project is to rezone a spot that's otherwise zoned as residential. We think that zoning is sacred, and it should not be changed. One reason that it's so important that this is not changed is, like you've heard from others, the traffic on Shea is horrible, and the ambulances, I believe, will be very dangerous. This is a route that a lot of people use to go to elementary schools in the area. There's Sequoia, there's Cherokee, there's Kokopam Middle School and Chaparral High School, and some other schools in the area that you have high school drivers, and with the ambulances that will be coming down, I feel it'll be very dangerous. It's already dangerous. Any additional traffic, as others said, it's not easy to make a turn into that location. I've made the turn onto 54th, and it is super dangerous right now. Please do not make it more dangerous by adding more people who will be turning in, and specifically, ambulances that could be turning into that location. I think that will be super dangerous. So please, it's not that I'm against a standalone ER, but I think that location is terrible. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time, and thanks for your service on this committee.
Our next speaker is Louis Lopez. Louis, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Oh, thank you very much. I live at 5358 East Mercer, which is just north of the facility, and I want to echo something I was said by the other gentleman. Honor Health currently has a facility on Shea that operates as urgent care immediately on Shea, on Shea and 70th Street. Phoenix Children's Hospital also operates a urgent care. So you have two facilities, urgent care facilities right smack dab to the Middle East issues, and more importantly, in both locations, they are purely commercial locations. There aren't residential homes, and you don't have the problems that you have right now. The issue is, I'm a simple guy, and I like to keep it simple. The bottom line is, we all bought homes in this particular community with specific representations that that particular area would never be rezoned or be operated in the manner which Honor Health wants to happen, and we all relied on that. And we all bought homes in there believing that we were living in a residential community, and we continue to live in that residential community. It was never articulated to us. We never were ever put on notice that there was a chance or an opportunity for someone like Honor Health to come in and change an area that was purely residential and put in a pure commercial operation. And I have participated in the different meetings, and what I have kept saying over and over again is that the statistics that are repeatedly relied upon and given to the city council and given to the boards that are repeatedly relied upon and given to the city council and given to the boards from these locations in Texas and now in Avondale. These are all cities that don't have the population density that they're looking to put this facility in. These are all locations in which population density is less than $225,000 or 225,000 people, as opposed to the significant five, six million population density that you have here in the city of Phoenix. So I, I, I just wanted to, I want everyone to consider that fact as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Luber. Joe, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. There's a little bit of an echo, so if you could turn down the volume on your speakers, that would help with the audio.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sounds great. Please proceed.
Okay, I don't want to reiterate everything that has been said so far. I live in Promontory, uh, directly across from this property. The only comment that I have is that we have heard more individuals against this project. The, uh, Phoenix, uh, or the Paradise Valley Council hearing, there were, I believe, 15 people who spoke against, three spoke for. Two hundred and, over 200 people have signed a petition against this. Uh, in the earliest pre, early presentation today, the map that showed there were few green dots far away from the community. I do not understand how you, when I say you, our council, our elected officials, can possibly, in good conscience, vote for a project that so many people are against. It just does not make sense to me how you, as elected officials who are supposed to be taking care of your constituents, not taking care of a multi-billion dollar company or whether Honor Health is already a multi-billion dollar company or will become one. I cannot see that. Uh, there have been many, uh, reports that have been entered into this case that show that this type of an installation is a money maker. It is not something to really help the community. If you have an urgent care center, you cut your hand, you go in there and they take care of you at a reasonable price. You go into this honor care, urgent care connected to the hospital. I guarantee you, it'll go to your insurance company if you're fortunate enough to have insurance and the bill will be considerably more. So economically, it is bad for the public. So I hope you, as our elected officials who represent us, not representing Honor Health, the big boy out there.
Mr. Luber, we have Sharon Luber registered to speak as well. Is she with you to make her comment?
Uh, no, shoot, I, I made the comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alexis Marsh. Alexis, are you on the line? Our next speaker is Jennifer McCall. We do not have Jennifer. Our next speaker is Catherine Mendeville. Catherine, are you on the line? Catherine, are you on the line? We do not have audio for Catherine. The next speaker is Judith Peterson. Judith, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you for having me. Um, my name is Judy Pedersen. I live in Promontory, which is across the street from this proposed facility. Uh, my husband and I are opposed to this change of zoning for this neighborhood. Um, on, basically because there really is no compelling need for it to be at this location. I've lived here for over 20 years. I have had to use EMTs on two occasions, regretfully. Uh, things turned out well and, um, I have never felt a need for an emergency room beyond what is available at the present time. We have urgent care up the street and down the street and a hospital. I'm a citizen and a resident, and I really rely on you as council people to listen to the citizens. We have no other voice but for you to listen to us. We're residents here. This is our home. And we expect you to uphold the zoning laws that are there to protect us. If you look at Honor Health's own slide and you see where this would come in, you can see the creeping socialism into, uh, commercialism, excuse me, into this, uh, part of the neighborhood. So I'm asking you to consider this seriously. There have been a lot of, uh, points made. I could go into more, but I don't want to repeat myself or them. Businesses that are like this are commonly built in affluent areas and not necessarily in areas that lack services. And as I said, we already have services. We want to retain the residential area and stop this commercial push down Shea. People have already made many comments about the, um, the traffic. And then the 24/7 idea, to me, is very, um, displeasing. Just, it, it's uncomfortable for a neighborhood to think that there are people coming and going 24/7 in their backyard. And people, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James Rayburn. James, are you on the line? James, are you on the line?
I live in La Camarilla, very close to the proposed zoning change property. And, uh, I, I won't try to repeat, uh, many, much of the input that, that the council has received so far, but I appreciate the, the opportunity to, to speak. I would urge the council members to keep in mind the doctor's input we've had. It's very meaningful and impactful to me about the deficiencies in care provided by this type of emergency facility. We, the council has also been provided with a technical article indicating the deficiencies in this kind of care facility, as well as the article entitled "The Emergency Room Hustle" uh, from December 2019. Some very significant and important points are made in those, in that material, and I think they should be kept in mind. We have, as many have pointed out, nearby care facilities that adequately serve this area. This is not something that is needed here. And we also have, as, as been noted, significant, a significant number of local commercial vacancies in the area. I've lived here in La Camarilla since 1985. This was a, a community inextricably linked with the La Camarilla Tennis Club and, uh, workout facility. Uh, for many years, we were, we were promised lifetime, uh, memberships in that club. Uh, that's long gone. The, uh, mountainside fitness now blocks a significant part of my view of Mummy Mountain. Uh, and the last thing we need here, uh, and the most intolerable thing that could happen would be a 24/7 emergency care facility that's not needed. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nancy Ribble. Nancy, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Thank you. This is Nancy Ribble and I live about 500 feet away and I oppose this project. Uh, before I start, I wanted to point out that many have spoken, which has been previously pointed out, that who are in agreement with this project have yet to say why here, which is one of our major objections. I have several questions I wanted to ask yourselves as though you lived in this neighborhood. Would you want a 24/7 business behind your house? You bought a home with the expectation that it gets quiet when it gets dark. It's not as if this building was already there and we chose to move next to it. Would you like a view from your home loft? The revised proposed height has not substantially changed. The height of most of the building, not the tallest entry point, is only a foot different. It's also misleading to state that the new building is several feet lower than the building next to it. And the ground has already been raised from its previous development. Why, what impact does this have on our property value? It significantly decreases it. Who's going to pay for this decrease? Is it the city of Phoenix? Is it Honor Health regarding the traffic? How will the customers exit if they can't, if they need to go east on Shea? It's very difficult. Traffic is a problem here. They cannot guarantee a light is going to be put there. Plus, either way, there's going to be increased traffic feeding into 54th, starting more traffic into our neighborhood. Regarding the increase in noise level mentioned, uh, in the presentation, it would equate to the noise level of a blender. This is not a joke. Would you really willingly subject yourself to listening to your blender 24/7, which drastically increases the stress level of those who are subjected to it? The location, again, why does it need to be located here in a residential neighborhood? There are so many other commercials, already commercial, available with lighting, parking, profit, proper traffic controls, room for expansion, et cetera. Since all of us are already going through so much with COVID, community state, country affairs, how much more change do we need to endure? Honor Health says we need to accept change and just accept that it's going to be loud. This project causes, anyway, that's, thank you.
Our next speaker is Neil Rockowitz. Neil, are you on the line?
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
My name is Dr. Neil Rockowitz. I'm an orthopedic surgeon. I'm actually on staff at an Honor Health facility. I've lived in this neighborhood for thir, over 30 years. My home is one of five that actually borders this parcel to the north. Obviously, this fight has been a frustrating, infuriating year for us. To rezone sacred residential land to a C2 use is just unthinkable. It's especially disturbing that our first face-to-face meeting with Honor VP Rick Murdoch and attorney Rydell, they confessed that they would actually oppose this next to their own homes. 24/7 aspect of this project is the most egregious part of this application. So why here? Their only reasons are not to place it here. Throughout this process, Rydell has led us all to believe that this standalone hybrid ER is some novel Honor Health project that is unique to the valley. This just isn't true. Dignity Health already has developed 15 of these standalone ERs spread throughout the valley. I know Councilwoman Stark has visited one or two of these dignity sites during the daytime and was impressed with their centers. The problem is the nighttime. Turns out dignity has actually paved the way in how to properly develop this type of business. Every one of their ER, bar none, sits on a highly commercial corner lot. All were built on C2 or equivalent parcels. All have ample ingress egress and none are surrounded by residential. One of the sites actually looks very similar to the northeast corner of Tatum and Shea. Our site offers none of these characteristics. From a city council standpoint, dignity has shown a clear blueprint on how to develop an ER. Honor Health should take note. I'm going to abort the rest of what I have to say because I just can't stay silent anymore listening to Rydell make false statement after false statement. She told this committee to you that one to two patients per night would be seen, uh, after hours. She told the press two weeks ago, it's one to two patients per hour. She told you that.
Our next speaker is Darcy Royal. Darcy, are you on the line?
Yes. Hi, my name is Darcy Royal and I live at 5420 Mercer Lane, two blocks away from the facility. Uh, please, councilmen, preserve our neighborhood. Please do not rezone. Please listen to our neighborhood, please. Please, they have a 300 persons, uh, petition signed by homeowners of surrounding the area. Honor Health is an excellent product. In the right circumstances, it should be built 500 feet west at the C2 vacant spaces on Tatum and Shea. We moved to Orange Tree Estate neighborhood, north of Shea in May of 87, 34 years ago, in a quiet, beautiful neighborhood. We enjoy playing tennis at La Camarilla and our children grew up with that. We had many opportunities to move, but no, we love the quiet neighborhood. We have to live and deal with the horrible repercussions of the mountainside fitness building. They're devastating, poorly studied decisions that affect all my neighborhood's quality of life and property values. And our quiet enjoyment of our homes are lost. It's unsafe for biking and walks and strollers when my children visit. Just today, a Pepsi diesel truck almost hit a car coming out of mountainside and it, this diesel truck went up 54th Street. I couldn't believe it. The Honor Health attorney said the neighborhood needs an ER. Frankly speaking, anyone who lives in this area is not going to go there. They're going to go to a hospital. We have insurance. We're going to go to a full-service hospital where there's life-saving doctors and specialists. 10 minutes down the road on 90th Street, seven minutes up in 56th Street at Mayo Clinic. We're not going to waste our time on an overpriced ER with physician's assistance. The 24-hour facility can easily be built 500 yards west on Tatum and Shea. When anyone decides to purchase a home, we don't look for a busy place to buy. We look for a quiet family neighborhood. When banks.
Our next speaker is Rob Royal. Rob, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you very much. The student is overriding many of the comments, is why here? Why seriously change zoning that's been in place for many years, which is difficult to do under the law? Why here when it's going to create worse traffic and adding another light on 54th Street and Shea, adding numerous lights along Shea? Why here when there are commercial spaces available in, uh, various areas, particularly at Tatum and Shea? And Honor Health already has a medical facility at 50th and Shea. Why here when there's accessibility, as noted by numerous speakers, for emergency rooms to the north, to the west and to the east within 10 minutes? Why here when you can call an emergency vehicle if you have that type of emergency that will probably get here faster than driving to 54th Street and Shea at this location? It just doesn't make sense. I thank you for your time as a resident two blocks north of this area and I urge you to vote no.
Our next speaker is Tom Rustling. Tom, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Tom Rustling, I live in Camarilla Estates, just a couple hundred feet from the proposed rezoning. And I stand, uh, firmly against this proposal. The, uh, people who have spoken for, uh, really make no argument of why this location would be needed. There's, uh, existing infrastructure, as everyone's pointed out, just a quarter mile or so away. There's, uh, an Albertson's, a Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, a Staples, all kinds of commercial areas that have the infrastructure already available that are sitting there empty. And yet recreational and residential area zoning is sacred. And there's very little of it. And there's absolutely no need to remove what little there is. What's the point of a zoning law if it's not going to be upheld? The council members, it's your mandate to protect the interests of the citizens that you represent. There hasn't been one compelling reason to put what little residential and recreational area and sacrifice that when there's so much available unutilized space already. Thank you for your considerations. Please do the right thing, what you're chartered to do as a representing citizens that have spoken today.
Our next speaker is Michael Shano. Michael, are you on the line?
I am on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Uh, my name is Mike Shano. I live at 5419 East Mercer Lane, uh, two blocks from the project. I live at 5419 East Mercer Lane, two blocks from the project. And a couple of things, I wanted to echo what Neil Rockowitz said regarding the dignity health emergency rooms. My company installed the signage on all 15 of those. Every one of them is on a commercial corner. So, and they are patterned off of a product out of Texas from Arizona General Hospital. And then, secondly, I'm just going to kind of ask you to listen to what the neighborhood impacted by the project has said. There are better locations close within a quarter of a mile away that don't need to be rezoned. So I think as a city council, you're there to protect our rights, protect the zoning. I implore you to reject this rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Eileen Shore. Eileen, are you on the line?
Yes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Hi. Hello to honorable mayor and the city council members. My name is Eileen Shore. I live in the Marbella condominiums. My condo actually sits on the corner of Shea and 52nd Street. I oppose this project. Extra traffic noise, especially ambulance noise, will be a nightmare for me. At 75 years old, sleep is difficult for me, especially trying to fall back to sleep after being awakened. City council members, please don't make it more difficult for me and the 60 other Marbella condo owners and their families with a 24/7 emergency room across the street from our condos. My Zoom before this Zoom was on optimize your sleep. It is important for your health. Thank you, city council members, for your time, your consideration, and for letting me speak on this very important matter. My applause to all of you.
Our next speaker is Julie Silverthorne. Julie, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Excellent. So thank you to all of you. I ask you to vote today with both your heart and your mind. Consider, would you do this in your own neighborhood? And please answer that honestly to yourself. Let me answer first of all, because I am the first president of Belatera. Our property is immediately across the street on the south side of Shea at the top end of Paradise Valley. I was the first president there of our HOA 15 years ago. And I can answer, because I also have had my real estate license here for 15 years, why they want this site. Let's be honest, we're all adults. I think we can be truthful. They want it because they can own it outright. They will not be leasing like they would at Staples or Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. They want complete control. It works for their numbers. And while they say they're a nonprofit, yes, legally, they're a nonprofit corporation. They're a profit-making nonprofit. And it's very important you all understand that. I don't know if they contribute to your campaigns. That's something you have to look at compared to us as individuals. There are two main intersections that are the worst on Shea Boulevard. According to Scottsdale Traffic Analyst, it's at the corner of 90th Street, where Honor Health has their hospital and Shea. And the other one is 92nd and Shea. We had a pedestrian accident. A woman who worked at La Comarea, Denise, was killed right near Super Pumper, 1,000, 2,000 feet away from this site, walking to work from a bus stop at 8:15 in the morning in 2018. There's likely possibility that people will die from this. So yes, the irony is, of course, they want it so we have services, but it could be one of us who's opposing this who will need the service because of pulling out onto Shea. Our own property manager here was in the side of her car. Her car was in the shop for three weeks because of Shea Boulevard's current problem.
Our next speaker is Helen Sparrow. Helen, are you on the line? Helen, are you on the line? We are unable to hear Helen. So the next speaker is Jody Statchel. Jody, are you on the line?
I'm here. I'm here.
Thank you. Please proceed. Yes, we can.
Um, I, okay, thank you so much. I live just about a block and a half north of this proposed site. And I have to be honest with you. I moved into this house in 2003. Our family sacrificed so much to live there so that our children can go to the neighborhood school there. And over the years, we have sacrificed over and over again to be in that house and to continue to try to see if we can make it work there. And it has been very difficult over the years. And now you want to bring something in that is going to make it more difficult for us to sell our home down the road. And we will make less money on it. And that means less money to retire and pay back debt, et cetera, et cetera. If you only knew how much it was for us to be there. And I don't think that you guys are thinking about that. You're just thinking about whether or not Honor Health wants to go in there. But what you're neglecting to think about is all the people that live there and have sacrificed. And now you're taking that all away from them. So I do implore you to consider this and to really think about it. And to, of course, say no and ask them to go somewhere else. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Margaret Stewart. Margaret, are you on the line?
Hi, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Hi, my name is Margaret Stewart. I live directly across from this proposed rezoning site at 5249 East Shea. My bedroom window looks directly onto this proposed site. And I wish I could actually take my phone outside and show you the backup that's happening right now as we're speaking. I am not against this project. I am against its placement. I can barely get out of my own neighborhood as it is right now, let alone when you add in this site. Okay? You will make us prisoners in our own homes. Please take this project to Tatum and Shea, not in the middle of a neighborhood. And respectfully, lights on a tennis court at night when they turn off around or before 10:00 PM is not the same as a 24-hour business with business lights. Respectfully, there is a huge difference between being allowed to operate at all hours and actually doing it. Mountainside Fitness is not operating 24/7, though you say that they can. They are not. There is so much commercial property in this area, as already mentioned, and soon that's going to be blight. Think about that. Respectfully, again, I don't have a million-dollar home. I don't. I don't have the millions of dollars that my neighbors do. But I am a neighbor and I am a homeowner. And I sacrificed just as the person before me to be in my very first home as a millennial who's dealt with a lot of student debt and just trying to be part of the American dream. And it's going to be taken away from me. So you can put as many tree setbacks as you'd like, but this project is going to set back an entire neighborhood. Please don't use commercial property ahead of your citizens and vote against this rezoning. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council members.
Our next speaker is Robert Wiesenberger. Robert, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for listening. There's not much I can add, being that I'm towards the end of the alphabet and everybody has spoken before me. I oppose not the hospital itself, but the placement and the rezoning. And I hope that you will vote not to overturn this. One other point that should be made is a traffic light on 54th Street really does nothing for this facility, which is in the middle of the street, which will have no egress or entrance to Shea unless the traffic is stopped elsewhere. So I believe that the traffic light is really a moot point. Again, please do not pass this and let them move elsewhere where there is vacant commercial space. Thank you.
Mayor, Robert was our final speaker.
Wonderful. Thank you. We will close the public hearing and I will turn to Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, mayor. I have a couple of questions I want to ask. First, Ms. Riddell. She's there. Can you hear me? Can we turn on?
One moment, councilwoman.
Thank you.
She's unmuted.
Okay.
Thank you, mayor, Councilwoman Stark. Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. My question to you is, did you look at other parcels of land that are already commercial? And if you did, why not go there?
Thank you, mayor, Councilwoman Stark. We did, in fact, look far and wide at the additional commercial properties in the area. I can tell you, working my way west to east, the church site unfortunately has some very complicated deed restrictions that prohibit the church from being taken down, that prohibited us from using that site. The site that was referenced north on the other side of Shea and west of the Trader Joe's, I actually represent that landowner. I can tell you he is not currently a seller for this particular type of use. Further to the east, so if you look at the northeast corner of Tatum and Shea, we looked long and hard at that site. It is unfortunately much too large. And there are also lease covenants that preclude what we want to accomplish here. So there really were no other commercial properties in this corridor available to us for this use.
Okay, thank you very much. And then, Alan, if you could speak to the actual zoning that's there. My understanding is there is a special permit over it that makes it more commercial?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, you are correct. In 1986, the council approved a special permit over the site that allows the Health Club commercial uses, allowed the tennis club and Health Club that was been there. So for over 25 years, this property has had commercial zoning entitlement. So it's not residential.
Thank you. So I actually did go to visit some of these other facilities, most notably the dignity health. I went to Owatuki and then I went to Mesa. And they are adjacent to residential. I sat at the site at the one in Owatuki for 25 minutes, and it was very, very quiet. It looks like an office. It feels like an office. And there just was no activity. One person left the facility while I was there. And I'm going to guess it was probably a staff member going home. And then I did some research on the site in Peoria, and that's an Abrazo ER. And it is really close to residential. And I called there what would be equivalent to our NSD director, Chris Hallett, and talked to him at length about complaints, about noise, about ambulances. And they simply have had no complaints. He says it looks and feels like an office. Even in the evening hours, there's not that much activity, and we've never had a complaint. So I really, looking at what I saw, it does feel like an office. It's very quiet and very well landscaped, and it was one story. So I know there were some concerns with traffic. And there were some concerns about how it's licensed and what it might become. I don't think it's a true hospital. This is not a hospital. So I asked Alan to put together some additional stipulations. And so Alan, can you speak briefly to those? That would be stipulation five, eight, and nine?
Thank you, mayor, Councilwoman Stark. Stipulation number five requires that a traffic signal at the intersection of Shea Boulevard and 54th Street be constructed and fully funded by the applicant in coordination with the street transportation department. The streets department will coordinate where the lights are located, those types of things. But it does meet the warrants and will allow traffic to make left turns out of there and slow traffic so that cars can move in and out in this area from the other driveways. I would also just note for the record, although not part of the STIP, that the subject site has a cross-access agreement with Mountainside Fitness. So somebody could go across Mountainside Fitness property and go out the exit over there and go to 54th Street to go, like, for example, left on Shea Boulevard as well. So it does serve the development as well as the surrounding neighbors. New stipulation number eight, Councilwoman Stark, does prohibit the operator of the facility from applying to be a designated trauma center to the Arizona Department of Health Services. So it keeps it a less intensive use. And then stipulation number nine does require that within six months of the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, which is when the building would be allowed to be occupied and opened, the operator will organize a meeting with the adjacent residential property owners to the north as well as Planning Development Department staff to look at the site lighting in the rear of the property to see if additional screening measures are warranted. And then they have agreed to do those at that time, you know, based upon planning department direction. And with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
No, I don't have any other questions. Mayor, I could make a motion unless some of the other council members have questions?
I think a motion would be great, and we can turn to council members after that.
Okay. Mayor, I move to approve the Planning and Development Department Director's memo dated April 21st, 2021, and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second from Councilwoman O'Brien. Councilmember comments or questions?
Mayor, I have questions.
Please go ahead, councilwoman.
Thank you. It was brought up a couple of times that this is a hospital. But I thought it, could someone clarify ER versus hospital or both?
Mayor, Councilwoman O'Brien, it is not a full-fledged hospital. The reason there's some discussion about that is part of the licensure in order to be a 24-hour urgent care facility is similar to an emergency room of a hospital. And so that is why there was some discussion about a hospital, but it is not a full-fledged hospital that they're proposing.
And would they have the ability to expand to become a hospital?
Mayor, Councilwoman O'Brien, the PUD development standards would make it incredibly unlikely that it would become a hospital. They don't have enough building area to make it a hospital. It's a very small building that, you know, would not be able to function like a hospital.
Okay. Thank you so much, mayor.
Thank you. I want to recognize Councilwoman Stark for her very hard work on this case, as always. She had so many onsite meetings, virtual meetings, phone calls, emails. She was sworn in on Monday. And while I was at rehearsal for inauguration, she was out, sitting in parking lots of these facilities, trying to understand what the impact would be, which we appreciate that hard work. She spent late nights watching the Paradise Valley Village Planning Committee meetings, as well as the Planning Commission. She made sure that there was public comment today. This case was originally not noticed for a public hearing, so it was on our April 7th agenda. And as she asked it to be continued to today, so it could be re-noticed for a public hearing. If she had not made that effort, we would not be in this hearing right now. So I think that shows her willingness to listen to many points of view and to try to find something that works for this community. So I just wanted to recognize that hard work. Any additional council members wish to make comments before we call the roll on the vote? Roll call.
Ansari?
Yes.
DeCecio? Garcia?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor? Pastor? I apologize. Pastor? Stark? Waring?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
That's a seven zero.
Thank you. Thank you to all who gave their time and testified. We appreciate your involvement with the City of Phoenix. That is our final agendized item. We next move to public comment, and I will turn to our city attorney to introduce public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the council to listen to the comments, but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
Thank you. We have three members of the public wishing to address the council today. We'll begin with James Diebler, followed by Sean Severd.
Hello. Hi, I am James Diebler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona, in the Phoenix Council District 5. Last year, I was diagnosed with COVID-19 at Arizona State University. I was quarantined for 24 days at my house. I had a bad experience with the virus with a cough and throwing up a lot. I almost went to the hospital. This Friday, I have an appointment to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. I encourage Phoenix residents to get the COVID-19 vaccine to make sure the citizens will be safe from the virus. Finally, former Phoenix Councilwoman Southern Williams did an excellent job serving constituents for the last three decades at Phoenix City Council. She interviewed me for the newsletter five years ago regarding my accomplishment at Glendale Community College. I graduated from Arizona State University with the Bachelor of Science in Public Service and Public Policy. I hope to you, Phoenix Councilmember in Phoenix Council District 1, and it will be good. They sure have a lot to live up. I will really need to meet with Phoenix Councilmember Ann O'Brien or an other one to discuss on, adopt a street for our group in West Phoenix on New Metrosoph Mall. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, James. Sean will be next, followed by Andre Williams.
Yeah, hi, Mayor and members of council. I first just want to welcome our new members of council and also congratulate my council member, Councilman Garcia, on his new role as Vice Mayor. All very exciting stuff. Obviously, I hope everyone sort of rises to the occasion on all accounts. And I am going to be using this time to sort of formally submit a citizen petition that I've already sent to the city clerk's office. And I also want to commend the city clerk's staff, just really great communication, asking them some questions about the process, and just really communicative and informative. So congrats and commendations, I guess, to them. So I will be submitting a, I guess I already have submitted a citizen petition. And I don't take this lightly, but I do consider it a pretty big concern, and I hope the rest of you do as well. I will be asking the city council to consider censuring Councilman Sal DeCiccio. Two weeks ago, in these, in this council meeting, the last formal council meeting that we had, he repeatedly violated the city Phoenix rules of council proceedings, particularly Rule 8D. And so I would ask in this petition for that to be considered. And, you know, it's something that the mayor is very passionate about, is something she mentioned at the beginning of citizen comment today, is, you know, when we have meetings, what is the tone, you know, how are people acting? And I will say this, from a citizen's perspective, we are held very much to check on that. And it's very disappointing when a councilman, a person who is supposed to be in a position of service, I would say power, but it's really about service, that should be something that you all are really invested in and not something just to sort of get the spotlight on you. So I will be asking again for you to consider this. And I do want to stress again, you know, this isn't really about politics or not agreeing with someone, because, believe me, I don't believe in anything, I think, for the most part, that Councilman DeCiccio believes in. But I also vehemently disagree with Councilman Waring. Councilman Waring, though, is very respectful of the rules of this position, and it's a position that if we do not hold people accountable for, I think it's just a bad reflection on the city. I think it's a bad example for our new council members. And again, I just want to stress that I do hope you all, regardless of your political, you know, belief system or alliances, that you really consider, you know, holding this up an example, because it has been increasing over the last year or so with just the really negative behaviors. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker today will be Andre.
Hello?
Hello. The floor is yours.
Okay. Good afternoon, council members, Mayor, City Manager's Office. This is a citizen petition as allowed by the City Charter, Chapter 4, Section 22. In 2017, the council voted to establish an Ethics Commission to review complaints against city elected officials. According to a recent Arizona Republic article, the commission has yet to be established as of April 2021, even though the city documentation, including the elected official's ethics handbook, makes it appear that such commission exists. Anyhow, since the Ethics Commission has yet to be established, the council should update its membership composition prior to its implementation. On paper, the commission is to be composed of two Democrats, two Republicans, and one no-party member. However, this composition does not reflect the composition of the voters in Phoenix. According to the Mericopa County Recorder, approximately one-third of voters in Phoenix are Democrat, one-third Republican, and one-third Independent. The council should modify the composition of the Ethics Commission to consist of two Democrats, two Republicans, two Independents, and one from another party, who are a total of seven members, so that the Independent voters are not underrepresented on such an important commission. Also, given the council will have the final say in whether an action is taken against one of its members, the Ethics Commission should only require a simple majority, four out of seven, votes to declare an ethics violation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That is our final citizen comment. Again, congratulations to our new councilwoman. We are adjourned.